Good evening, everyone. I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Remote electronic attendance, I believe we have one?
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Sixth Ward Alderman, Pat O'Brien, at the committee of the whole and city council meetings of July 26, 2022, due to a personal illness or disability.
Second.
All right. Motion by Alderman Moyer, second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Great, that motion passes. Good to see you, Mr. O'Brien. Board of-
Thanks.
Board appointments include two, two are CACOP board, Brett Carter and reappointment of Mark Evans, Chris Ann Burgow, that's a scrupulous error there, her last name is Burgow, to the youth commission to fulfill an unexpired term of Jake Montague, and appointment of Kate Benson to the public art commission to fulfill the unexpired term of Sean Moller. Any questions? Okay. We do have one proclamation this evening. A proclamation from the Illinois Iowa Center for Independent Living to declare July 26, 2022 as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. We do have friends from the Center for Independent Living with us, Destiny. I'll read the proclamation first, and then if you wanted to say a few words, please feel free to come to the podium. So our proclamation reads, "Whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities, this legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the city of Moline affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth for the state of Illinois and as embodied in the ADA, the laws of our state and ordinance of our city, and whereas numerous organizations in the city of Moline and the state of Illinois work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA, and whereas on July 26, 2022, the city of Moline will celebrate this 32nd anniversary and recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I Sangeetha Rai Pari, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2022 as Americans with Disabilities Awareness Day." So, thank you so much. Would you like to come to the podium?
I don't have much to say, but on behalf of the Illinois Iowa Center for Independent, we thank you for this day.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, our next item is a public hearing, which means I must recess our committee of the whole for the time being, and we move to our regular council meeting called to order with a, and a pledge of allegiance. If we can do that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correct. So we go straight into our public hearing. And I, you'll note in front of you, there is a rules procedure for public hearing. I'll start with an introduction. Good evening. Tonight, we're conducting a public hearing on an appeal by Robert Riley via his architect, Caleb Rogers, from an adverse decision by the city zoning hearing officer, Thomas Skarepa, on Mr. Riley's application for variation from the bulk and setback standards of Section 35-3201, Table 3201.1 of the Moline Zoning and Development Code, case number 2022-04ZHO. The variation requests a four-foot encroachment into the required 25-foot front yard setback. The hearing of Mr. Riley's original application was held before the city zoning hearing officer on April 2021, 2022. The zoning hearing officer issued his order denying Mr. Riley's variation request on May 5, 2022. The basis for the zoning here, hearing officer's denial was that the variation request failed to meet five of the eight standards to obtain variation relief. Specifically, the zoning hearing officer found the following with regard to these standards. One, the variation is sought to address a hardship unique to the property, not met. Number two, the variation will not create a special privilege solely for the property owner that is denied others in the same zoning district, not met. Three, the literal interpretation of the zoning regulation has applied, as applied to the property would deprive the owner of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district, not met. Number four, the owner cannot derive a reasonable use of the property without the requested relief, not met. The variance requested is the minimum necessary to make possible the reasonable use of the property, not met. Number six, the variance is compatible with surrounding development and will not be injurious to the value of adjacent properties and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, met. Number seven, the granting of the variance will not conflict with the purposes and intent of the zoning code, met. Number eight, the granting of the variance will not conflict with the goals, principles in the city's comprehensive plan, met. This public hearing gives Mr. Riley an opportunity to appeal the decision of the zoning hearing officer. City council has the power to affirm the zoning hearings officer's decision or reverse the zoning hearing officer's decision, which we can do with conditions attached to the variation approval to minimize negative impacts on surrounding properties. So our order of procedure for the hearing today is on this sheet in front of you. And because you have all of the materials in the packet, agenda packet, that summarize the staff's side of things, we will start at number three, the petitioner's presentation question.
I need to recuse myself as I have a business relationship with-
Okay. Thank you. That's noted. So we'll start with number three, the petitioner's presentation. Today's public hearing is an, on the, on the record appeals. At the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, the city council may either make a decision or continue the hearing to a later date. Decision of city council in this appeal will be a final decision appealable by Mr. Riley to the Rock Island County Circuit Court. So, if that is a sufficient introduction and presentation, Madam Kostopoulos, we'll start with the petitioner's presentation.
I believe I'm the petitioner, is that correct? Okay. My name is John McGeehee. We live here in Moline, and we've asked for a slight variance to the setback line in the, in our neighborhood. We live up in Homestead, I don't know if everybody can hear me or not, but we live up in Homestead, up by the Y. We're about only a block to the, not a block, only a lot to the east of the YMCA. And we have a setback line that kind of goes parallel with 19th Avenue in Moline. But at that location, 19th Avenue curves back to the north. And so the way the house was built, the house was built in 1992, we moved in in 1995. So we've been there for, oh, 27 years. The way that the, the street turns and the way the house was built, it kind of goes like this. And we want to add a room addition over on the west side of the house. And the west side of the house right now is this big white wall we have, and we want to build on with a, excuse me, a bedroom and a porch and lots of windows. And so we're able to look west and enjoy the sunset, and we're hoping to also put a small pool in that location as well, too. We need to expand. We have a nice, nice house, but our family is growing, and we want to be able to have at some point the ability to bring family into the house to stay when they're visiting. And we want to put a bedroom on the first floor as well, too, so that we can kind of really enjoy that side of the house. And the administrative law judge that was involved in this did not find that the property was unique, but it really is because of the way that road curves back so much and the way, and the way the house is built. It just, you know, the addition is going to be only about four feet into the setback line on, you know, in, closer to the 19th Avenue. And so it is almost impossible for us to build on without being, being allowed to get the, the variance. We've hired an architect, and the architect is here as well, too, from Streamline. He's the one who has filed the, the letter, and he has done an excellent job of creating really kind of the dream that we want with our house. And so, and I understand the way the code reads is that there's always a 10% wiggle room, and if you do the 10% wiggle room, we're only talking about a foot and a half into the setback on the, on that side of the house, which is the front side of the house. Right now, we have a very large evergreen there, and we would probably take that out. And this is going to be just a porch on this side of the house so that we can sit and look west. So it'll be done in a very professional, nice manner, and we've had no objections from any neighbors. And on 19th Avenue right there, too, there's no parking right in front of our house. You have to park on the other side of the street. So there's, there's going to be plenty of room, people to walk on the sidewalk, and we really ask that you give us a small variance to, to build on and make our home kind of our dream home. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Is there more from our petitioners?
And my wife likes-
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that Robert Riley actually was our neighbor that is mentioned in this tonight. He actually lives right across the street from us, so he's actually our neighbor who was here the other time to say that we're nice people. But, yeah, we love where we live. We don't, and we're realtors, so I look at houses every day. I really don't want to live anywhere else. I don't want to move to Iowa. I don't want to live in a condo. I just kind of want to stay where I'm at. We have like a fenced-in backyard. All the dogs are welcome just to open the gate and go back and play. So we just really want to stay where we're at and just kind of have a porch out there, and, and the porch is what's in question. The addition of the house part is not in question. That's all within the guidelines. It's really just the, the porch that you walk out onto to have a chair and watch a sunset and have that area of the yard, which we kind of don't use right now because it's kind of blocked off. But, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Linda. So we move to our next or number item on this hearing, yes?
Mayor, I, does the architect mind to make a statement?
Thank you.
My name's Caleb Rogers with Streamline Architects, representing the homeowner. I'm here to support if there are any technical questions regarding design. It is a custom one-off design based on the neighborhood.
Can you speak up?
It is a custom design based on the neighborhood and the individuals that own the home. It's not off the shelf. It's designed to fit in aesthetically and to serve all of their needs to make it their forever home. So if there are any technical questions, I'm here to assist.
Are there any? I think we take questions later. Thank you. So our next order item is public testimony and comment. Is there any further testimony from the public in the room at the moment? Okay, hearing none. I can, I will move to cross-examination, opening the floor for anybody to ask questions with the assistance of our legal counsel.
So at this point, if you wanted to cross-examine any of these witnesses, this would be your opportunity. Now, further on, we have questions by you as council members. We could consolidate them. So if there are questions about the documents that you have already reviewed, to clarify, so remember, this is not a new fact-finding hearing. This is to review the decision of the hearing officer. So you are free now to ask questions of the witnesses to clarify any, you know, facts that might need that.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Waldron, and I see you, Mr. O'Brien, you'll be next.
Okay.
Is this the time to ask staff questions?
Well, you know, we, we do have, the next item would be response by petitioner. There would be, and then followed by questions, which, so right now, it's really about your witnesses, so-
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, is your question for the witnesses, the petitioners?
No, I don't have any question for the witnesses. I just-
Okay, we'll come back to you then.
I'll get back to it, yeah.
Yep. Anything for witnesses? Okay.
All right. So then we would move on. Now, we have no response because there was no questions. And I will point out that we cannot remember when the last hearing like this occurred, so that's either good or bad, we're not really sure, but obviously, it's not a normal process for us. So then, questions, Alderman Waldron, that you can ask to clarify facts. And staff is here.
Yes. Is there a question then for Mr. Vitloc?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to come forward, sir? And Mr. Waldron, you can go first, followed by Mr. O'Brien.
Ryan, not being an expert in planning and zoning and all that stuff, I read the eight exemptions, and when I read the eight criteria, the applicant appears to me, to me, in my humble opinion, the three most important ones, and the other five, while important, don't really get, in my mind, to the meat of the issue. I was wondering what staff feels about those eight criteria and the five they don't meet versus the three they do.
So typically, variances, let me take my mask off. It's easier for, hear me. Typically, variances, they're intended to be incredibly rare. They're really supposed to be when there is a unique situation that is out of the control of the property owner, where our ordinances would preclude any type of development, any type of use of the property. Typically, when you see those tests, all of them need to be met. It's not where you can only have three of them, or, well, if you've got five of the eight, well, you've met a majority of them. Typically, you have to meet all eight of them. And so staff's recommendation would be the same as, as was in our staff report, which is that unfortunately, the petitioner does not meet the test for variance, and staff's professional opinion follows.
Follow-up question?
And I just want to say, I respect that. I realize staff's role in this is to evaluate that criteria, stick to that criteria, whether they agree with the applicant or not, that's their job, and I appreciate that, and thank you for the answer.
All right, Mr. O'Brien?
My question to staff is, and I, I would echo what Alderman Waldron just said, I really appreciate the work that staff does, and I, I don't seek to like go against them, you know, in a decision like this. But what hardship would this put on the neighbors? I mean, that's basically the reasons we have these codes, right? It's going to like, I mean, affect the neighbors in a negative way of any kind, or if, if any hardship at all, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, you certainly can look at that, but that's not really a test that we look at. The test is, does it-
Okay.
-inter, does it not meet the ordinance? And, and we have to treat all property owners in the city fairly, and just because, you know, somebody might be on a curve of, of a, of a street or something like that, that in and of itself is not typically going to be enough to, to-
Okay.
...pass that threshold of a, of a variance.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
As I look at the lot, and you sort of just spoke to this, what is the test in place then to decide whether it's a uniquely shaped or unusually shaped lot? Because it looks unusually shaped to me, and in the near space, there certainly is no lot that has similar bends or even that corner edging that is obviously different. So I'm just curious what the test is that would determine whether it's an unusual-shaped lot or not.
I mean, that's certainly, you know, that is certainly something, you know, to, to look at, and, and that's only one of the eight tests to keep in mind, and so-
But in my estimation, if it meets that test, it actually meets three.
It's, that's potential that it does.
Because it, it's not a special privilege if it only applies to someone with a unusually shaped, like, some of the phenomenos fall on those ones being held, I think, back.
Typically, what you're going to see is, is it would be something along the lines of, of something that, as I said, would preclude the, the property owner from, from expanding upon their, their property, where they would have no, no right to, or no ability to do that. I, I'll give a quick example. It, it would be similar to what I've always heard it to, is it's akin to a castle in a swamp. So let's say that there's a swamp on a piece of property, and the city says you must have a certain setback. Well, the swamp precludes somebody from building within that, that area, and so the only area they can build on that property is actually going to be in violation of our ordinance. That in and of itself is really going to be kind of that unique situation. We have properties all throughout the city that are on, on curves and things like that, where a part of the property might stick further out, you know, along there. That in and of itself, again, may or may not rise to that level, and that's really up to this, you know, body to decide. But the, the, the final thing I would say is, is again, it really is not supposed to be a self-imposed issue and, or hardship, and in this case, you know, this is something where a property owner, I would say, is, is aware of the shape of their lot and when, when they purchased it, and, and so therefore, you have to determine, is it really an appropriate request to now request that relief with them, knowing that, you know, that they had that limitation? So, a, a, again, I mean, it's, there's, I mean, that's why you all are here. But, but what I would say is that, you know, staff determined that this is not a unique situation. I was not a part of this analysis, but I did take a look at the analysis of it, and I do agree with what, with what staff had initially written before my arrival.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
For legal counsel, is, what is our, what is our right or responsibility as far as reviewing this ordinance? How strictly are we held to that eight-point test?
So maybe the best way to answer that is to refer to the code.
Yes.
Where you, if you reverse it. So if pursuant to your deliberation, you determine that a reversal is appropriate, you would have to make a specific finding that either the plan commission has acted in a manner inconsistent with the code or other applicable law. The plan commission, and by that, I mean the hearing officer, has made erroneous findings of fact, and that could be that the hearing officer reached the wrong conclusions on the factors. The plan commission has failed to fully consider mitigating measures or revisions offered by the applicant, or the plan commission has acted arbitrarily, capriciously, and/or abused its discretion, or finally, in addition to one or more of the previous findings, that the applicant was present in person or by a lawful representative, and was at the hearing in which the original decision was made. So they would have had to participate initially, which has been fulfilled. So you could find any one of those plus their appropriate participation, and then you will go back to the criteria. If you believe that the variance addresses a hardship unique to the property, that would be the first mark. That it will not create a special privilege, as you mentioned before, that the literal interpretation of the regulation would deprive the owner of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The owner cannot derive a reasonable use of the property without this relief. And that the variance requested is the minimum necessary to make possible the reasonable use of the property. So you were, those are the five that the hearing officer found were not met. Now, the hearing officer has the charge of applying the codes directly, and that is what he did.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's currently a fence in, in the approximate location that the addition will go. Does the same setback requirement not exist for fences?
No, fences you can have up to your property line, depending on the height of the fence.
So an eight-foot fence up to the property line, is, is okay, okay.
Depending on, I mean, if it, well, in the-
Eight foot down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Six foot for it, yeah.
It's based, yeah. But yes, you can have a fence up to your property line. There is, there is limitations on the height, depending on where it is located.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
So aesthetically, he could be denied this, but he could choose to put a six-foot fence all the way down to his property line, tear down the tree, cut down the tree, and act, and be well within legal-
I am not familiar enough with the property to know exactly where this fence would be located, but-
But he could put a six-foot fence on his property line if he wanted to.
As long as it's not in the front yard. The front yard has a limitation, but on the side or rear yard, yes, the property owner has the right to install a, a six-foot privacy fence, just like anybody else would.
Other questions? All right, hearing none. We can move to commission discussion and deliberation.
So Mayor, I would recommend that if there are no other questions, that you close the hearing and then deliberate. So the hearing, the taking of testimony, the questions would be closed. You can do it either way, leave it open or close it prior to actual deliberation, which you will do in open session here.
I, I'm a little confused because the last item says a vote by the public hearing body will close the public hearing.
If you don't-
Oh, unless it was closed-
Right.
-following the conclusion of all testimony.
Right.
What is your recommendation?
So my recommendation is you close it now, so that we know, you know, we have a firm time and, and action prior to deliberation. So you're only deliberating on the information from the hearing, original hearing, and then this appeal hearing.
And at what point in the, our agenda do we have that deliberation?
Oh, you would have it now.
Immediately?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is that something that needs a, a vote on which, which, which way to go?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay. Is there-
Second?
All right. Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Schmidt, to close the hearing right now and move to deliberation. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. We need to do roll- Hearing none. Uh, we need to do roll call, please, because we have someone online. Alderman Macias.
Aye.
Went. Oh, I'm so sorry. Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes. Are we counting the one abstention or not because he's not in?
Right. He is not.
Okay. Thank you. So we're closing that hearing at 6:30 PM. Um, so we move to deliberation. I want the deliberation recorded. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you would, so we invite counsel to deliberate, you know, discuss.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
As I look at this and looking through the eight issues, I think criteria one of hardship unique to the property, given the shape of the lot, I'd be more than willing to say this is a unique shaped lot and that does create a hardship to that. And I think with that, it eliminates criteria two regarding special privilege. Um, however, as I look forward, I, I, I don't see any evidence that suggests that criteria three, four, or five have been met, um, into what I am looking at. And since we are in a position where we have to look at all eight criteria and that fact-finding role, I just think it's very limited to how we can proceed unless anyone else has an argument or further deliberation that says otherwise. But, um, that's kind of where I fall down. I think it's very, I think it's unfortunate. I think zoning codes can also, can bring a lot of really unfortunate circumstance like this. But based on the information in front of me, that's kind of where I am standing at this moment.
Other commentary, thoughts? Mr. Waldron? And then I see you, Mr. O'Brien.
I, I wanna, I wanna go the opposite of James. I, I find, uh, the property unique enough that it makes the other five criteria. I think, not that it's something that is evaluated, that, uh, common sense comes into this and take a look at the lot, take a look at what these people want to do, what they want to invest in Moline. I realize that's not part of the cur, criteria. I'm fully aware of that. But I think by judging that property unique, it meets the eight criteria. Thank you, Your Honor.
Um, Mr. O'Brien and then Mr. Moyer.
Uh, well, I was gonna make a motion to approve the variance granted on the uniqueness of the shape of the lot. Um, and I agree with Alderman Waldron on this. I think it's a unique situation. We don't get a lot of these. Uh, we don't go against what staff has said very often. But I think in this instance, uh, I would ma, make a motion to approve this variance. And we can do that, right, Margaret?
You can, and I would suggest that you add to your motion, um, to reverse the hearing officer's decision and grant the variance based on, uh, that the hearing officer has failed to fully consider mitigating measures or revisions offered by the applicant.
Second.
Now, Mr. O'Brien, is that wording what you want your court to state?
Reverse the decision of the hearing officer based on the, um, official, uh, side reliant and the criteria that was used. Is that, was I even close?
Well, kind of.
Cause I was trying to write and you kept talking.
I think that you want to say, um, on the basis that the plan commission has failed to fully consider mitigating measures.
I think you, you meant the.
On the basis of planning commission that failed to fully consider the mitigating measures.
Guys, we gotta get this right. It, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien. She misspoke and said the plan commission. She meant to say zoning hearing officer.
For zoning commission. That the zoning commission.
It's that.
Failed to.
It has to be hearing officer, cause that's what it is.
So to avoid what we had last week.
Boy, here we go again. Okay.
You'll never make a motion again.
Oh, I, I wish that were true.
All right. Hearing none. Yeah. Hearing none. Ask you to withdraw your motion.
Wait.
Why would I withdraw my motion?
Well, just to start over.
Can I read, just read it?
Okay. All right. I withdraw my motion.
It's cleaner this way. All right. Mr. Mr. O'Brien has withdrawn the motion.
And I believe Alderman Timian is going to make it.
It's only cause I can read it.
Okay. Um, Mr. Timian.
So. I'll make a motion to reverse the decision of the zoning.
Hearing.
Hearing officer, uh, based on the fact that the planning commission has made erroneous findings of fact based on the evidence and testimony on the record. And the plan commission has failed to fully consider mitigating measures.
Second.
Zoning. It says planning here. Zoning hearing officer, not plan commission.
Thank you for the correction.
Don't we want to say and grant the variance?
And, and grant the variance.
And grant the variance. Thank you.
And I hear, there, okay. Second by Alderman O'Brien. Um, discussion on that motion. I know you had wanted to say something, Mr. O'Brien.
I want to say what he said, just not so eloquently.
All right. Okay, Mr. Macias.
I just want to say, uh, it's not that much of a variance. And while I do respect the work that our staff does to make sure that we get things right, and I, I believe in this, um, instance, um, we, we can certainly be flexible. It, it looks like it's gonna look beautiful when it's all said and done. So I'm glad that you're staying in Moline, choosing Moline, and investing in your property. So.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Now, I, I just wanted to thank, um, the, the petitioner for, um, getting the feedback from neighbors. Um, a lot of what builds a community is neighbor input. And, and that's a very important aspect for how I consider these things to go. Cause if the neighbors are happy with it, that, that's really the, the biggest hurdle.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vitas.
I would just add for the record, tech, staff takes no offense to decision-making at the dais.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias.
Aye.
Went. I won't go ahead and say it again. I'm sorry. Alderman Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Okay, that motion passes. Um, so at this time, I believe I will recess this council meeting. And.
Public hearing.
This recess that, we are in a council meeting, though. I have to recess it to go back to the cow. Right.
We already recessed the hearing.
Yes. We already recessed. Sorry.
Closed.
Closed the hearing.
Closed the hearing, recessed.
Now I'm recessing the council meeting and we're going back to our committee of the whole meeting at number six. Public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? No, hearing none. Any questions on the agenda? Yes. Yes, you're finished. Thank you. So we move to our committee of the whole agenda items. Eight point one, uh, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a memorandum of understanding between the city of Moline and the county of Rock Island, setting forth the terms for submitting a joint application for funding and authorizing staff to do all things necessary to submit the subsequent grant application currently available through the U.S. Department of Justice 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Yes, uh, just briefly, mayor and counsel, this is a recurring grant application that has gone on for over 10 years. It's actually probably even longer than that. And this is a shared grant application between the city of Moline and the county of Rock Island in which it's a 90-10 split. We recommend approval.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Uh.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. All right. We move to eight point two. Oh, that motion passes. We move to eight point two. Resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to execute the intergovernmental operating agreement between the Moline Police Department and the Illinois State Police.
Yes, uh, mayor and, and counsel, um, I would point out first and foremost that given the, the short timeline we have for this, that it will appear both here on the cow as well as, uh, in the non-consent agenda, uh, in your council meeting this evening. Uh, but this is an opportunity for the city of Moline to pursue grant funding, uh, very specifically from the, um, intergovernmental agency agreement to create the violent crimes intelligence task force. And basically what we're looking at is, uh, providing for compensation for salary related specifically to conducting FOID enforcement activities, putting such things as concealed carry. We recommend approval this evening.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Motion by Alderman Moyer. Was that you? Who's second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Went. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Williams.
Chief's not here?
No.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief is here.
No.
Yes, sir.
Deputy chief, no. Is this something where, uh, an individual be tasked to do this? Or how would you enforce these FOID violations?
So these are individuals that are already have suspended or revoked FOIDs that have been recognized by the state already. And then we would just go out and enforce that in order to recover their FOID card.
So wouldn't be like the ISP traffic stops or the DUI traffic stops?
Exactly. We'd be working jointly with ISP investigators to enforce that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, sir.
Is this expected to, is this gonna take officers away from other places? And do we think that's the best use of their, of our officer allocation?
Sure. No, I don't think it's gonna take officers. We'll use our officers in our special enforcement group. In fact, they, they just did a, or a check in June and checked on, they recovered 12 FOIDs in conjunction with the state police. So no, it's not gonna be a heavy lift for the department.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hearing, no further questions. Uh, roll call, please. Alderman Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. Okay, that motion passes. Do we have any others this evening, Mr. Vitas?
Uh, none.
Okay. We move to our informational. Nine point one, review of ARPA funding. Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And if you just pull that right up to your face.
I will. I will do that.
Thank you. Again, thank you. Um, tonight, I'm just going to present a very high-level
status report on about, on our ARPA funding. And, um, just to start off, I wanted to say that we did receive our second half of our funding in June. And so we currently have $20,783,977 of received ARPA funding. So we can all be very, very happy about that. To date, we have spent almost $2.6 million, or about 12 and a half percent of the total allocation. And just to remind all of you, um, we do have until December 31st of '26 to spend the funds. So we're in very good shape. That's a little over four years. We do have to have the money allocated and, and offer a plan, um, to the federal government by December 31st of '24. And as I'm gonna go through in a minute, we are following the plan that, that the council, um, adopted here earlier in 2021. So as we go through, in front of you, you've got, um, the updated ARPA plan. And I just wanted to suggest a few amendments. As we are heading into August 30th, um, I think you've seen the calendar that we're, staff is gonna be coming forward in August with budget amendments citywide, which includes the ARPA funds. And I just wanted to give you a heads up on some of the ones for ARPA that you will be seeing at that time. If you turn to the second page of your handouts, you'll see there's actually gonna be, I think it's four or five asterisks. And I'm just gonna hit the very first one. And that one is, it's on the unrestricted projects halfway down the page for MCDC. There's $100,000. We originally had budgeted that for 2021. But, um, as you know, any sub-recipient has to meet compliance, whether it's unrestricted funds or restrictive. And we did not, we were unable to get the signed application as well as documentation that we needed. So we're moving forward with that. It's just gonna be now in the summer or later this summer. So we'd like to amend that $100,000 for spending op, um, authority now in '22. And the same is for Renew Moline. Um, we had budgeted in '21. We're gonna be moving that forward here now in 2022. They've actually received their, um, cash already. The next one, it's on the next page under the restricted assets. And the first one there is for our water and sewer. In 2021, we had budgeted to spend a million dollars in water and sewer. And we had a $65,772,000 carryover. So you'll see on the amendments, we just want to be able to spend that now in '22 as well. And then the last one, um, on this sheet is the small business loans. Again, council had adopted $250,000. For the small business loans, we have four sets of those loans. So for 2021, we did not spend $25,000. We'd like to carry that forward into 2022 as well. And again, this will all be part of the amendments we bring back to you in August. In addition, on that same page, you'll see at the very bottom, some red highlighted documentation. And that is the council action that you have taken so far this year. And the first one is for the parks, water fountains. Council had approved that for the total amount of $102,000. The resolution as approved by council actually was requesting unrestricted funds. Since the council has adopted this, we've done further review and it does qualify under restrictive. And as, there was another project that had come forward and council had said, if we can use restricted when we can, we'd like to do that. So that's something I'd like to suggest and have council consider to go ahead and get that moved into restricted. We haven't spent any money yet, so there's still time to do that.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Are you, is that gonna be part of your amendments in August?
Yes, it'll be in, in August. Just kinda wanna get a heads up, cause council had already taken action on that. Okay? So that'll give us some flexibility. Um, then the medic vehicle, you'll see there for $53,000 that just passed, um, here a week or so ago. And then the last one, and that's still for consideration for council to make a final decision on, is the touchless plumbing fixtures. Um, Sarah Markin Facilities had made a recommendation or a request for $92,000, um, for fixtures throughout various city buildings. If council chose to do those plumbing fixtures, along with changing this other, um, the parks, water fountains, we'd have one minor change. If you go back to your first page, it actually would increase, because we're flipping that restricted and unrestricted, you'll see a future allocation on your sheet of $168,000. We'd actually be able to increase that to $243,730. And that is actually net of those plumbing fixtures, um, for Sarah Mark. But again, council needs to take formal action on whether to proceed with that or not. And that will still come before you.
Thank you.
So turning the page, here we just got a couple more items I just wanted to give you a heads up on. As we proceed preparing the amendments for August, there's actually four items I just want to give you a heads up. Um, staff is currently looking at the timing of the cash flow for spending down the money. So we're not changing the total project cost. It's just, it may not happen in '22. Those four that we're looking at, we're looking at all of them, but specifically, um, the high numbers on that second page with the unrestricted, the I-74 acquisition, we've got $2 million allocated. We haven't spent, we've only spent $400. So it's virtually nothing so far in '22. As we prepare the August amendments, we'll come with a recommendation. We're also going to have an additional amendments come, um, November, December. So we're gonna have two chances to amend it. But that's one we're looking at. Um, go on down the page, the one-stop shop for $2 million. Again, we're gonna look for the cash flow. The third one is the bikeways and the multimodal. I know during our strategic plan, uh, roundtable, council had, um, the desire to potentially move these projects forward if possible. So staff is already looking at that feasibility of what could be done within '22 or '23. But they are looking to pull those forward and we'll come back with a recommendation on the timing of that. It just needs to be It just needs to be realistic budget-wise. And then the last one is our million dollars. It's on the next page, the million dollars that we had allocated for broadband. Again, just after we make our final decision on the direction we're going, that number could or, or may change as well. So, any questions on that part of it? If not, the last, it's just a couple of comments I wanted to make. Back in January of '22, the federal government did change the funding formula for revenue allowance, and originally there was revenue growth allocated of 4.1%. It got increased to 5.2, which is wonderful. And as you know, also our revenues have come back, and you'll see that during the amendments as well. We're very fortunate that we've had our revenue stream coming back. But because of that, we knew that that formula between restricted and unrestricted is going to continue to change clear through 2026. But we were fortunate, because of that growth and that allocation, our number's almost identical. It did reduce it by about $248,000, but we're still in very, very good shape. And as presented on your sheet, that is still the breakout right now. But just to give you a heads up, as we continue through 2022, and with everything happening with inflation and whatnot, we're going to continue to monitor it, and then we actually do a complete reset calculation after we've completed the audit for the 2031 of '22, I mean 1231. And then, yes, just lastly, with the inflation, we have also heard that they may be changing the formula again. You know, a year ago, they changed it up. They may very well be considering to move the 5.2 to a higher level, too. So, again, that's not the case right now, but there's been shown that there's some discussions about that. And with that, we'll just continue to keep the council updated, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anything from the council? No? Thank you so much, Ms. Barnes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to our action plan dashboard for fiscal year '22, second quarter report. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, before you mayor and council, you would have received with your agenda pack at the 2022-2024 action plan dashboard for the second quarter ending June 3rd, uh, June 30th, right? Yes, June 30th, sorry. As you can see in reviewing it, there are some projects that are now complete. There are projects that are still on track. There are projects that are, that may have fallen behind. There are those that still have not begun yet, and, and in part, that's, in part, that's because they're not scheduled to start necessarily during the current fiscal year. In some cases, they need to, but they don't start till later in the year. I know that there were some questions submitted by Alderman Went. I believe I have answers for most of those questions. I'm not sure if he wants to go over those this evening or not, but I'm more than, no? Okay. But if you see anything in here where you have questions, as I pointed out before, you know, I appreciate hearing from you on those questions and then getting either answers directly from myself or securing answers from staff members responsible for different goals and implementing those projects or programs. And I guess that's, it's pretty much it. I don't want to go through the whole document. It's quite a lengthy document. It will be posted. You know, as we go forward, I know that one of the council goals, and I do want to bring it up, and it was actually a directive, is that, you know, when we adopted this plan some time ago, we came back later and made some changes. So, as we take a look at, for example, the whole discussion about the bike waste plan, you know, which is really crucial, you know, the 19th three-quarter, the backbone of the entire system, you know, is a top priority, and it's going to stay a top priority. It's also part of, of what would ultimately be part of the multimodal plan, you know, as a part of the comprehensive plan update. But I know waiting to get that done is, is, it's time, right? The comp plan's not really meant to get started until we wrap up all of our discussions with our form-based code, so that becomes an integral part of that comp plan, you know? And then the follow-up to that, of course, is the rezoning, updating our zoning plan in its entirety. This is not meant to wait that long. I had conversations at one point with, with ByState about them possibly working for us using our ARPA dollars, for example, to actually fund having them update our plan, because our plan is really rather old. And having them actually do that, I've talked to David Dreyer about it, of course, he's, you know, he's new to the ship. He's, you know, trying, trying to stay, stay on board and then doing a good job of it. And then he and I discussed that, because you can, we can integrate this. I mean, you can have a multimodal plan that they prepare where bike waste is just an element, because multimodal is much more than just bike waste. So, you know, we're looking at that, we're discussing that, and we're going to probably come back with some thoughts on, you know, what ByState can or can't do, and can they do it in a timely fashion or not, because I'm not sure what their workload is either. But there is cer, they are certainly a wealth of resource for all things related to this very topic, you know, because there are area-wide plans that they've prepared. So, you know, just a heads up on that. And then if we were to do something like that, we might migrate these strategic goals together, right? At a later point, let me just say we'll consolidate them. So, like I said, it's a plan, not cast in stone. It can be amended. So, when I see those amendments, I'll bring those forward to you. And that's all I have.
I'd, I'd like to register just two items on that plan. Number one, and I sent an email to the housing working group that I established last summer, that today I visited the Moline Housing Authority, took tours of Spring Brook and Spring Valley, saw the videos they've made to share with potential residents of what is available, what the neighborhood looks like. It's very well done. They continue to be a, a good partner with the city. They did tell me that their waiting list has now bumped from four to five months to six to nine months. And so, I'm very concerned about what we're doing for affordable housing and our rental inspections coordinator, or the staff position, I'm sorry if I'm not getting the right, the correct name, I am, as well as the crime-free housing bit that's been put on hold. I think that the sooner we can get to those issues, now that we have rebuilt some staff and, and, I think, did you have interviews for that yet, that position, or are you about to have them?
Leah and I spoke about this rental housing inspection coordinator position just last week, I thought.
Actually, it was this week.
Was it? It was just yesterday, then. And that's how, that's how the day went.
But you understand my, the concern, right? Where? Absolutely. We're in the process of finalizing the job descriptions for those two positions right now. Okay. And obviously, I mean, just having that isn't going to address the affordable housing piece, but it's our basket of, of approaches and working with nonprofits, et cetera, to help this happen. I think, I just want to refocus on that if we can, if that's a priority for the council. Secondly, the $85,000 for recycling, right? Now that we have Midland Davis in the mix, are we still, are we just hanging out on the 85K? Or is Rickema doing something with it? Or that's where it was headed, right?
Yeah, Your Honor, I was going to give a report. We went around the table, but might as well do it now. Rickema just approved their budget. As we know, we have Midland offering recycling at, from a private source. We still have no public sources that want to step up and host a site, whether it's the townships or other municipalities. No one has stepped forward to do that. Rickema is starting to get a little bit healthier, and they're going to continue the SWAG grants, the Solid Waste Assistant Grant that go out to all the municipalities based on their population. And they also budgeted $80,000 for recycling opportunities incentives. So, if someone comes along and wants to start up a site, or somebody in the private side wants to, need signs, need help buying another container to hold the cardboard, Rickema's is going to help wherever they can. So far, no one's applied. It's like a revolving house, revolving funds. No one's stepped forward to do anything. We've offered, Mike, Public Works Director, and I have both offered to Midland to help them with anything they need. At this point, as far as I know, Mike, they haven't approached you for anything more, nor I, nor Rickema. So, if Midland needs something, we're, we're standing ready to help them, either from Moline or from Rickema.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Went?
So, along those same lines, would, would that be something where they would be interested in, just one, I mean, obviously, we, we do mandatory door-to-door, single-family homes or whatever, but obviously, our multifamily condos, all of those things, don't have it. Is that something where maybe we could work with Midland Davis to have them subsidize or help with maybe some of our larger?
You mean in reference to public education or?
No, actually pickup to, with, with some of the multifamily stuff.
Yeah, that's the outstanding issue that we still have, is what are we going to do with recycling and multifamily housing?
Well, but, but that's what I'm saying. If there's an $80,000 grant out there that nobody's taking advantage of.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
So far, we, we, City of Silvis went around and talked to every single facility or that of any size, and absolutely zero were interested in starting recycling, a, a cart or container or anything. They're worried that their tenants will treat it like solid waste, and that they're just going to have more cost. We haven't done much for that in Moline. I don't think we've surveyed anybody. But so far, we have not gotten a large interest in something that's housed by the landlords, so to speak.
It seems like maybe, you know, a first job for the person you do hire, or someone in CED, I don't know, or whoever you would determine to, to survey our, our multifamily units to get that baseline information. Mr. Went?
And to that point, it, it may be us reaching out, because I, I could see some maybe condo groups or, or something where, you know, they've got some ownership stake that say, yes, we do want it. And so, it may start out small. It may just be kind of pick and choose and, and, but I, I don't disagree with you. Some of the, you know, Pheasant Ridge, I can't fathom them being like, oh, yeah, that's, that's something we want to take on.
The only case history we have, going back to being an old public works director about 15 years ago, Homewood Manor, up there off of 60th and 53rd, tried it, and it went south on them, so they were no longer interested. And that's the only experience I have in Moline.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Went?
To circle back a little bit, since you, you had brought it up, that was one of the, the, the questions and concerns I had regarding the scorecard or whatever, as it pertains to the rental housing coordinator, single-family home. And, and one of my questions in there, it said, hey, we're like, I don't know, we're 60%, but we haven't even come up with an ordinance. We haven't talked about how we're going to transition, because right now, we only have multifamily residential licensing for rentals here in Moline. And so, if we're going to start moving this forward, I think we need to start moving that forward. And it, and it may be like, hey, this is what our ordinance is going to be once we get the person on board, then it's going to start six months after that, whatever the case may be. But I, I think, to your point, when we're talking about affordable housing and all those things, we also have to make sure that the housing is safe, habitable, and not a detriment to our neighborhoods, because I'll tell you what, in, in the time that I've been on, on council, that is the number one thing that people have complained about, is the increased rentals in their neighborhood not being kept up. And I think that if we, we do this, it then maybe also allows for education on Section 8 and those sorts of things. I can speak from experience. I do, do quite a few Section 8 homes, and if done right, it, it can be terrific, but there are a lot of people who are completely adverse to it. And I know that, that the Housing Authority is looking for landlords to participate in that all over the place. And so, I, I, I think that these are two sides of that coin, and we need to move forward with it now. Otherwise, it's going to be four or five years before we ever see any. And by that time, we're going to have turnover, and then it's going to be another five or six years. So, let's get this rolling.
Okay. Other thoughts on the strategic plan dashboard? Hearing none, we'll go to our 9.3 Township Fire Service Agreement. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Thank you. At council's direction, we have looked at our agreement to provide both fire and EMS service to the residents in South Moline Township, and have either an understanding or a signed agreement, we're not sure which, with the Fire Protection District to provide those services in exchange for the, them, and they're, of course, a local government entity. They, in turn, turn over to us their, their tax levy funds minus minimal expenses. Now, EMS service is charged per call. So, the funds that we receive go towards payment for fire services. This understanding or agreement has been in place for about 16 years. According to notes that we found, there has been two previous unsuccessful attempts to renegotiate those fees. And also pertinent fact, according to notes that we found, in 2019, for instance, the city received about $44,000 in that year towards or for payment of services. Now, the cost of providing services, and again, it's strictly fire, can be analyzed two different ways. And Chief Snyder has looked at both ways, and I have asked him to explain his analysis because the results are pretty significantly different.
Thank you, Margaret. And, and my disclaimer, I did not get a degree in accounting, finance, or law. But back in 2020, as a result of some questions from the current, the, the then-council, I was asked in conjunction with Dirk, with Ansel Blenk, to look at what our costs were and try and come up with a, some sort of number. I chose, the first way I looked at it was just to take our fire department budget and decide, you know, round numbers, $14 million at the time. I created a three-year rolling average of our budget, and, and again, for ease of math, we'll just say it was $14 million. And then I just divided that by per capita for the residents of Moline, and came up with a number of about $320 per resident per year is what they, I consider their insurance premium that they pay to have fully functioning, and I like to think high-functioning, fire department for 24/7, 365. Then I was able to get some assistance from our GIS, Todd, who helped me develop kind of a per capita of what that South Moline Township Fire Protection District population was, and he came up with a number of about 1,255. Again, that was based on 2010 census, has changed somewhat, I would imagine. Again, taking our fire department budget, or creating that $320 amount per resident, multiplying that out, then that math would equate to about 400,000. So, a thousand percent increase in what a, what they are paying for that service. I think Corporation Council, Dirk was of the mindset, you know, we'll try and have some conversations. I was not privy to those at the time with some of the council for the South Moline Fire Protection District. I don't know, other than what Dirk said to me was something to the effect, well, you can't necessarily, they, they are not able to levy that kind of money. And so, I think the mindset was, we can't get blood out of a turnip here. And so I think the mindset was, we can't get blood out of a turnip here. So that number kind of stood there. Then I decided that we would, it'd be good to have a secondary factor. And so I, with what Margaret said about the fact that on EMS calls, which are a vast majority of our calls in that area, we bill for ambulance service. And so those residents are paying for services at the time of receiving them. So I took that same methodology for a fire response and looked at our fire responses in that three-year rolling average. We had eighty eight building fires in a three, three-year range. And then I applied what our then salaries were for the number of folks that we would have responding. I knew what a full response would be. It's called a force protection worksheet, so I was able to build that and found that roughly we would, on an average fire, if we were there for an hour, would need to charge four hundred and fifty-eight dollars an hour to cover just our salaries, our wages for those folks, not taking into account equipment, depreciation, pension liability, all those other things. It was strictly just salaries. And then with the assumption that it was one hour of being on scene, it equated to around thirty-eight thousand dollars if we were to charge for an average year.
Just one second.
Average number, that was eighty-four responses. I take that back.
Yes, Mr. Went.
But that doesn't, you said that 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 doesn't include pensions or any of the other stuff?
Correct. That's why I chose the two different methodologies. I thought it was fair to look at it from a total budget. So total cost for fire department operations, that was the four hundred thousand. And then just looking at a service level, one hour, full fire response for wages was the second method.
Yes, Mr. Went.
But that wouldn't, that's not apples to apples at all, because that's not what our residents.
And and.
Anybody.
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Chief, that fourteen million-ish number, does that include cost for EMS in it? Or is that just for fire?
That is everything.
So EMS is in that fourteen million, but they're getting billed, so shouldn't EMS come out of that fourteen million-ish?
And and certainly, I I think that Margaret and I had this discussion and actually previously Dirk and I did as well. Almost an endless way of approaching this issue with examining costs and salaries that that the residents do. And I I think what Margaret was hoping to do tonight was talk about the overarching issue of, you know, are are we gonna continue to provide these services and at what cost to these areas of the city? And then determine what is, and again, that's where the financial and legal professionals would probably help guide you through that process of what you as a council or a body would feel comfortable in, how you determine what is a fair amount.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I, and where you're walking makes sense, though. I think that there are a couple prob- there's a problem with each approach. The first is obviously, we don't really need to look at the expenditure side. We really need to look at the revenue side to determine what that actual per capita cost to residents is. Because if EMS is being paid from insurance and and private payment, then that's out of the equation. It's only what's coming from tax dollars that should be going into that per capita calculation, which allows us a better piece of that. In addition, when we talk about the other method of looking at their actual usage, I recognize there may be a challenge to doing it perfectly, but if it can't build in pensions and equipment and all the pieces, it's, it it will never be perfect, but that formula has to account for that, I think, to, I imagine it would be at least double.
Thank you. Mr. Went and Mr. Moyer.
EMS is not an enterprise. It's not a self-sustaining. It's.
No, the revenue is from ambulance revenue going to the general fund, if I speak correctly.
And so we gotta be careful that it doesn't pay for itself. It's, and and so I I don't disagree that there's probably a little bit of pullback from that fourteen million dollar number, but it's, it's definitely not getting down to the other. And so i- if you look at it, I mean, basically what he was saying was the people in in that area pay a a tenth of what our residents pay for the service, minus if we if we take that out. So even if we took that out, our people are paying three hundred and fifty bucks, they're paying or three hundred bucks and they're paying thirty-five bucks or so or something. I mean, it's it's a gross inequity. And and on top of that, so our people are subsidizing it. But then you also run into the other issue is, we got a large group of residents in Moline that are actually paying double. They're they're paying their city share, but also then the taxes they pay to South Moline Township is then also being put in. And so they're being, they're they're having to pay a ten percent premium to all the people that live in Moline Township. You know, because they're they're not only paying their city taxes, but now they're also paying their South Moline Township taxes that then go back into the city. And so we do need to figure something out. I I I do not want to leave people in the lurch in any way, shape, or form. But, you know, in economics and in this, it's what you call a free rider. It's it's people who are able to get services without paying their fair share of it. And as we represent the residents of Moline, and I understand what the chief said, but those people that that were servicing down there, that's not the city. They are not residents of the city, and they're not paying in like the rest of the residents of the city. And so to be fair to our residents and our taxpayers, we need to figure this out, that they shouldn't be paying a tenth of what what our people.
Got it. Mr. Moore and then Ms. Kostopoulos.
I I was basically gonna bring up the same point about the EMS, the EMS calls. Well, that's one expense. There's also the call of staffing them up and, you know, having that equipment there, but I'm gonna go ahead and pass on.
Okay. Ms. Kostopoulos.
So, well, I think we all agree that both ways to analyze those costs are are imperfect, as you say. But it is true that regardless of how you look at it, as long as we are responsible for those calls, we have to have proper staffing. There are customers. So we are looking for direction from council as to whether you would want us to begin renegotiation of this agreement, knowing that their their revenues are pretty low. Now, Bob has also raised some ideas about alternate payment structures or fee structures. But as a government entity taxing body, their, you know, income or revenue is fairly limited as well. So knowing that our expectations have to be appropriate in this process, we're looking for direction as to whether you would like us to send notice to terminate this current agreement, which would be effective May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then enter, in the meantime, enter into negotiations for different terms. And we raise this now and need some direction tonight because the deadline to notify is August first.
Yes. There were a couple hands before you, Mr. Waldron, then Mr. Timmy.
Next. Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, do we know how many properties we're talking in South Moline?
I don't believe I have that number.
So it was twelve hundred residents, though?
Chief, did you say sixty?
Population was about twelve fifty-five.
Properties or population?
Population.
Well, I I echo Alderman Went's comments about the South Molineers that are augmenting these folks down there. I'm interested to hear what Bob has to say to alternatives that, you know, I know of fire districts that they actually pay for their service. They're carved out, and, you know, if you want the service from Moline, this is what it costs. If you want it from Rock Island, this is what it costs. And certainly then the rest of the South Molineers aren't obligated to pay that fee for those folks that are in South Moline and not in Moline. So I echo Alderman Went's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Timmy.
Chief, is it overly simplistic to just have an agreement where we charge an hourly rate when there's a call? Like, we bill the township and just say, thousand bucks an hour. Pay it. And and that way, it doesn't affect the Moline residents who are in the township. It's directly for those properties that are only in the township.
Yeah, I think from from our perspective, we'd have to rely on council, you know, to make sure that that was something that we legally could do, first and foremost. Would we treat it, you know, we're we're staffed to to do what we do for that entity, for that portion, those areas of of unincorporated Moline now. So it really wouldn't, from an operational standpoint, do anything different from our perspective on how we respond. It would come down to finance and and how we track those and how we bill those and and would we be able to, and what would that amount be?
Thank you. Mr. Vitas, then Mr. Macias, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, that's fine. I'll go next. I think before we can get into a discussion in earnest with our our friends at South Moline Township, I think you'd really have to have the cost allocation study done. Because my experience in working in in multi-jurisdictional fire departments where you provide services beyond just your own corporate limits, you provide services to all of the adjoining municipalities around you. That study usually is done in advance of going into the IGA process so that everybody has a fair understanding of how costs will be distributed, both internally within the corporate limits of the city of Moline as opposed to outside of the city of Moline, in the unincorporated portions of South Moline Township, or for that matter, anywhere that's unincorporated where we might be providing services. You know, so that's one step. The other thing, of course, is looking at different funding models. You know, once you know what those costs are, and then you can go and equitably distribute those costs, then you look at the various funding models and approaches as to how you can go about spreading those costs out, you know, rationally and equitably, because as as has been pointed out, they have a limited pool of resource and that they basically give the city its tax levy, with the exception of a small amount of money that they keep just for their purpose of operations. That's unique, you know. If they were incorporated, I'm not saying to do that. I'm saying if they were annexed and incorporated, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be having the discussion. Twenty years ago, they tried that, and we saw where that went. You know, I just read all those articles today, in fact. It was really interesting. You're probably gonna hear the same arguments twenty years later, but same owners or different owners, you hear the same thing. So the reality is, is that's how I would approach this. And I mean, there are examples. I mean, when I was managing Lake Zurich, we provided services to all the surrounding communities. We had outlying fire stations and all, and with each of them an IGA and a very unique formula that that fire chief created like no other I had seen. And it worked, and everybody seemed to be satisfied with it. You had, you know, Lake Zurich, which was much more dense, you know, you had other communities that were a lot more affluent with very large lots. But he found a way to calculate that, spread those costs. And I might wanna look at that formula, go back and actually look at it rather than reinvent the wheel. Maybe that's part of the answer. So we would need time to do that.
Mr. Macias.
Well, and yeah, and that was kind of my point, which if you have some contacts with your experience that you can get some information fairly quickly, that would be ideal. Unfortunately, we just, we don't have a lot of time, but I'm sure someone's done it somewhere else and they figured out a formula that works, just tapping into those who have done it before.
And put the numbers instead of the results.
Macias, then Went and Moyer. I mean, Schmidt, Went and Moyer.
Yeah, I I would, anytime we move toward an opportunity where someone would have to pay for that service to come, and now we deal with, well, I'm not gonna call, I'm just gonna let my house burn down, which becomes a danger to the houses next door, which becomes a neighborhood concern. And what if the neighbor calls nine-one-one and the person doesn't want, that opens a whole can of worms that I think would not be interested in. Unfortunately, we're faced with kind of that same can of worms where if they resist, well, we may have to just leave them without that that support at some point. But I think as we look at that formula, it it has to be made more equitably. As one of those South Molineers who's paying for the fire department twice, I think that, like, I I totally agree, and I think we really are, but we have to initiate those conversations. They're gonna be hard conversations, but I think we just have to start it and determine what that is. Like, like I said, I think there are methodology questions. Now, I understand that the EMS revenue goes into the general fund. It doesn't change the fact that that is offsetting from what that budget is, and we'll lower that per capita. It's still gonna be out of whack. I mean, it, whatever that number comes to and how it reduces it. But I just think we have to start the conversation and be open and honest and work with the township as best we can to to find a solution.
Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. And and to that, I I agree. You know, I I think the first email we kind of shared on this was maybe two and a half, almost three years ago. So, I mean, this has been going on for 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 quite some time. And so, and and to that point, I don't wanna leave anybody in the in the lurch either. We, I think we want to be good neighbors and and all of those things. But I guess what I'd like to see is us do the tripwire, send this out, start the negotiations. It then puts some real. Emergency, yeah, urgency to 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 negotiate and figure it out. And it may be something that over time, it it creeps up to 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 get to where it is. I mean, we're always reminded in in certain circumstances, like, we're governed, you can always raise your taxes and and you can meet the the obligations. And so I I I'm not interested in that, but I sure as heck am not interested in our residents paying twice and also subsidizing other people, because that's where we'll run into some of these with the annexations. I mean, we got people who are one house outside of Moline, getting all of our utilities, getting all of our services, and they don't wanna come in because they don't wanna pay their fair share, you know. And and so this, I think, would alleviate a number of different things. So I I'll move that we we send this letter of termination and start negotiations as soon as possible.
Second. Hey, motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Williams. Discussion, Mr. Moyer.
I was gonna make a motion to send the termination as well, so I can pass on that. And then I also wanted to add, you know, do everything it takes to, you know, we have to do a study or or whatever to get that math right and get a negotiation. So I'm in favor.
Happy to take that on.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Williams.
As a township, could they raise their own fire department? Volunteer.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no further questions or discussion, roll call, please. Alderman, Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien. He's gotta unmute. Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. Thank you. You have your direction. Okay, so I will close out our Committee of the Whole and go back into, resume the regular council meeting, starting at a roll call, because you do not have an invocation, correct?
Correct.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timmy.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Council minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole this evening, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Second meeting ordinances. Council Bill thirty seventeen dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-three Parks and Recreation of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter twenty-three in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new chapter twenty-three dealing with the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty eighteen dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter sixteen Libraries of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter sixteen in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new chapter sixteen dealing with the same subject matter. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven twenty-three dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with five cities construction company for project number thirteen seventy-five, Fifty-Eighth Street Place Reconstruction in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Council Bill eleven twenty-four dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an test to a contract with Legacy Corporation of Illinois for project number fourteen oh six Thirteenth Street and Twenty-Sixth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Extension in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. Council Bill eleven twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to enter into an agreement to execute all necessary assurances and certifications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for CDBG entitlement funding under the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended of certain projects and programs for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and approving pro- uh projects and program recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Council on urban policy for the use of twenty twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Funds and the twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan, which contains said projects and programs, and authorizing the mayor to implement those approved projects and programs upon the approval of the city of Moline's twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to exercise any and all powers required to obtain such funding and to implement those approved projects. Council Bill eleven twenty-six dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution declaring the property at fifty-one twenty-four Sixth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, previously acquired by the city as abandoned residential property to be surplus and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement for transfer of real estate and do all things necessary to convey the property at fifty-one twenty-four Sixth Avenue to Moline Community Development Corporation and Illinois Not-for-Profit Corporation. Council Bill eleven twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a Fifth Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Moline, Illinois, and the Rock Island County Metropolitan Mass Transit District MetroLink. Council Bill eleven twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an intergovernmental agreement buy-in between the city of Moline, Illinois, and Rock Island County Metropolitan Mass Transit District MetroLink for a joint project to address drainage and pavement distress issues on Thirty-Ninth Avenue. Council Bill eleven twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a Ford one-ton cab and chassis from Texas Ford, I'm sorry, Sexton Ford in Moline, Illinois, for the amount of forty-two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Council Bill eleven thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Fisher Excavating Incorporated for project number two-two zero-zero-two-eight-five-zero-zero-RP, Thirty-Sixth Avenue and Eighth, I'm sorry, Thirty-Sixth Street and Eighth Avenue reconstructions for the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second, uh, motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Timian. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions.
Uh, beg pardon?
Yeah, yes.
Does it matter if we voted out of order? I forgot.
Oh.
Oh, we started with.
Yeah, we had.
Margaret said it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for checking.
Council Bill eleven thirty dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to execute the intergovernmental operating agreement with the Moline Police Department, um, to execute, I'm sorry, of the Moline Police Department and the Illinois State Police.
A move to approve?
Second.
By Alderman Went, second by Alderman Waldron. Is there discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Uh, seven ayes, one nay, and that motion passes. Council Bill eleven thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase touchless plumbing fixtures from W.W. Granger Incorporated in Janesville, Wisconsin in the amount of ninety-two thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents utilizing pricing on Sourcewell Contract Number twelve-twelve-one-eight WWG.
Move to approve?
Motion by Alderman Timian, second by Alderman Went. Discussion, please. Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nays, and that motion passes. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Move to our miscellaneous business. Uh, as I mentioned, I uh visit to Moline Housing Authority today. Uh, they made mention of their Resource Fair, which is happening this Thursday. Um, Kathy York Park, located behind the Moline Housing Authority office from three to six. Um, and there's a variety of organizations participating, Goodwill, Moline Activity Center, Diaper Depot, et cetera, the Moline Public Library. Um, and what's unique is it's not just open to uh residents of any Moline Housing Authority buildings. They are opening it to the community wide, so I'm trying to spread the word because those um supportive services and um these resource services are important for folks that live there and live in Moline. Um, so I just wanted to share that if you wanted to stop by, visit with anybody. And that is all I have under miscellaneous. Mr. Williams? Messias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Went?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Um, one, we had a conversation or a hearing that I was not involved with earlier, so I'm gonna talk in generalities. Um, but from sitting back there and and listening, um, it it sounded like this council, um, and something I agree with, is we want an ordinance that has some common sense, gives some flexibility to staff to make decisions that that make sense. Um, and I I hearing staff, there was some some discussion of like, well, we have to take all eight of those into account. It's not like a balancing test and and those sorts of things. And so what I'd like to do is uh to direct uh staff, I know we're cleaning up ordinances and stuff, but this is more of kind of a policy thing, to direct staff to review our zoning and to come back to us with recommendations of ways that it would make their um their life easier, that they can get to yes more often, while still protecting the the community and those sorts of things. But I I would like us to to move forward with that and and give that direction to staff.
All right, um, second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Went to direct staff to look at our zoning ordinance for more flexibility. Am I summarizing that correctly?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, now, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Discussion, Mr. Timian.
How is this different than uh objective one-five-C on our um dashboard, which is update zoning code?
Is that for Mr. Vitas?
Yes.
Sure. Um, in part, that's what we would hope. There's two things we really wanna achieve once we, once we get done with the comprehensive plan. And one is to have a complimentary zoning code uh that will address the new comp plan. I mean, that's just common sense. You know, getting to yes, making it more clear, making it more user-friendly, you know, updating it as Ryan will want to. Uh, there's nothing worse than a convoluted, complex zoning code written written by people who don't have to enforce it. So we're going to get there. That's exactly what we wanna do. I mean, in the interim, while we're sitting here waiting to get to that point, because that's a point in time that's out aways. It's a good year from now, right? Next year, this time, we might be in the middle of doing that. I would, I would think we can look for those aspects as we go through our zoning code and as we find things that are problematic where we have difficulty, and we do have those, we know we have those. Parking regulations, that is one for for the books. That's, that's a tough one, and we need to address it. You know, trying to be able to create a easier-to-understand code. We can make amendments between now and the time we go to the comprehensive rewrite. So I'm not adverse to doing that as we find those problems. And maybe Ryan, you know, you're new to the, new to the city, maybe Ryan could also weigh in because, I mean, he's the one who's gonna have to carry the the water on it.
Mr. Vitas?
I'll just say real quick, um, yes, I'm continuing looking at the zoning code to figure out where, areas where there's either conflicts or areas where, uh, yes, we can be more efficient. Um, what I, what I am um charging my staff with um is really for us to look at the code. Um, I don't want anything in the code where they can't explain at the counter of why it's in the code. Um, and and I'm, it sounds flippant, but I'm I'm serious, and that's, that's what I've done in in other communities. And and it really, it's very efficient because I don't want somebody on my team to just say, well, it's just in the code and you need to do it. We want to have very clear reasons why everything in our code is in our code. And and so that that is my commitment to this body is that we will continue to look at that and we'll have a very critical eye of what is in our ordinance and what are things that we can do to improve it.
Mr. Went.
And and my intent with this is not for, because I, because I agree with you, and I think that's where we're, we're gonna get to in a couple of years. And because it's going to take a couple of years even to to get the consultant, and then it's probably gonna be a year and a half or go plan. I mean, so we're years away from getting the structural, because there needs to be structural changes to how our thing is. What I'm just looking for is, like, you're going through and be like, hey, uh, this could be a balancing test. Let's make that quick, you know, and that will help at least get us over the next couple of years. Uh, so that's, that's what I'm looking for is.
My intent is to 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 do an annual review of the ordinance. Um, I I don't wanna to do just piecemeat, like, okay, we're gonna fix this, and then a month later, we're gonna fix that because it becomes expensive. We have to notice it, there's a time on staff. What my intent is, I would bring an omnibus of of changes of, here's ten different changes that staff has looked at. We've already got a running list in our department of of things of where we're like, eh, this doesn't really make sense. And so, yeah, my intent is, um, probably early, the beginning of every calendar year will be to take it to plan commission and then come to to city council with a a plethora of changes.
Mr. Went.
And 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 I appreciate that. I I just, and I personally, I'd like to see it, I mean, we're in July now. I I, if you've got a list of things, let's not wait six months to 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 make things better. Come back, just want direction and permission, basically. Hey, we've got these things, and then we'll come back again another eight months with absolutely different. Cool, but, you know, it's expensive for these people. I mean, you know, if they have to go through and then go through with the uh zoning, what's what?
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer that we kept, uh, you know, and then make another appeal, and that costs additional, I mean, that's hundreds, sometimes thousands of dollars.
Absolutely.
That, I think we all agree, hey, if we had a little bit more flexibility, that could have been done at the counter and better investment in our community.
And and the last thing I will say is that, um, you know, compared to other communities, um, I will say that our ordinances work fairly well here. We do not have a lot of variances. Um, and that, to me, shows that our ordinance is working as as it should. So variances are fairly rare here. I've come from communities where you will have dozens of them in a year, and that really is a sign of, ooh, there's something completely broken in your ordinance. So I will say the foundation of our ordinance is pretty good, but there's obviously and always will be room for improvement.
Mr. Went.
To that point, though, I I think I have had feedback from a number of people that, and this is before you were here, where they would come in and they'd just get told no. And it wasn't like, no, but you've got this appeal process and you can go through that. Because it was, you know, they talked to me a year and a half later and say, oh, I wanted to build this new thing up on Forty-first, and and I'm like, why didn't you? And they're like, oh, we were just told no. I'm like, you know, that could have been within administrative, I mean, you know, so you get into some of those things. And so I I don't want us not to get better because, and I understand we don't have a lot of variances, but I'm not sure it's just because there weren't two reasons for it, they were just told flat out.
Yep, there was, there was a culture previously, so.
Um, I see a question from Mr. O'Brien.
But but if staff is gonna work on these things, like Ryan has just talked about, and like Bob just talked about, shouldn't we just let them go ahead and work on, focus on what they're doing now instead of leading them to do this other thing that you want them to do? I mean, I th- I think it's, again, I think we're moving in the right direction on this. I don't see any need for a motion to direct staff to do anything other than what they're doing right now.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anything further on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, and that motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, you have something further?
Yeah, two other quick things. So, um, you know, this was National ADA Day. Um, uh, and this is one of the things where we've talked about it a few times, but I don't know if we've ever had anything come back to council that really tightened things up. I was driving down here just tonight and saw, you know, two places where the sidewalk was still gravel out by um uh country style. I mean, we still have a number of places where people work in the right-of-way, uh, wind up digging out places, and then it never gets actually filled in and fixed. And I still, through all this, this process over the last uh month or so, the feedback of other things working in the right-of-way, people digging up uh and then coming back and not planting grass and not, and filling things in with rock and garbage and and those sorts of things. That is something that we need to tighten up and improve. Uh, and so, uh, as it pertains to sidewalks and and work on the ground uh in our right-of-ways, I'd like to direct staff to come back with some ways to tighten that up to keep those people working in the, I I know we're tightening up permitting and all those things, but then them coming back and fixing things. I I would just wanna make sure that we're uh, we're doing those things correctly. So I'd like to direct staff to come back with with those improvements.
Okay, the clerk needs a little clarification on the motion.
So we'll, we'll move to direct staff to come back with ways to improve our accountability for uh workers in the right-of-way, uh, on the ground, uh, to uh fix any disturbances they've made while doing installations.
Clarification?
Yes, Mr. Vitas?
Is this for work performed by us or work performed by private?
Anyone in the right-of-way?
Both. Private contractors or both?
Both, a hundred percent.
Okay, and I, and I would just.
I think we do a pretty good job.
Yeah, I think we do.
But.
Hang on, uh, is your point of clarification then?
Yes.
Because I think we need a second, and then we can discuss. Can we do that?
Is there a second to this motion? Mr.? Mr. Moyer's second.
Okay, thank you. So discussion.
Let me, let me add this because I think this is one of the issues that that we're confronted with going forward, even with our upcoming agreement with uh with Metronet and our, you know, our broadband fiber project. We are looking at adding two right-of-way technicians who, the only thing they're going to do, uh, and funding this through ARPA, and we're gonna bring those forward for approval very shortly and once we've agreed to the job description. But putting people on board, as was done in other cities here in the Quad Cities, when Metronet went in there and started to disturb all the right-of-ways, whether it was in the air or below the ground, whatever the installation was. You know, and this might address part of what we're talking about because we, we've got a limited crew in terms of what they're doing out there, and and they're not gonna see it all. They're not gonna catch it all. If it comes in as a goal request, I I believe they see those and they probably address those because that's been somehow logged into a system. And eventually, over time, they're, we're, we're trying to get to those. But I think having these people on board goes a long way for right-of-way maintenance. I mean, we don't have people dedicated to that. So just a heads up, that's where we are moving and planning on bringing that forward to council.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
And and I appreciate that. I I just think from my conversations with there and a couple of other people, where where we have some gaps is, it says, hey, yeah, you need to to do this, but what happens if they don't? When, when he calls them up and says, hey, we've, we've got an issue over here, and there's no teeth to, for enforcement or anything. And so that's. And so that's what I'm looking for. We can have guys running out and, and marking flags and calling people all day, but if there's no accountability and nothing, if they, if they don't actually do it within the timeframes that we've outlined, then, then all we're doing is whistling the wind.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with this. We've had this discussion a few times and, I mean, I can, I could take you on a field trip of places where, where they've, they've come through and disturbed grass and now, now you can just see up and down the road where there's, there's hills of weeds where there used to be nice, straight level grass and there's no one that can be held accountable for these things. And residents have no idea who to call. They, they'll, they'll call the city and the city will say, well, you gotta call, you know, whoever did the work and, and those trucks are unmarked and they don't tell you who's working there and it just becomes, we just really need to get control of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Macias?
Yeah, this happened last year throughout my neighborhood a lot. And I, at the time I was running a lot so I could see them. But, uh, I also, my spouse works for the City of Silvis and they had the same thing. And she said it'll take months before they fix it because they put the gravel and then later on they come and do all the cement work. So it, I had to be patient. I didn't really get much pushback, but, uh, but it, she kinda managed, managed my expectations that these companies just are notorious for doing a bunch of this work and then at the very end they do the cement work and that's exactly what happened.
Mr. Went.
And, and that's the point. It doesn't have to be that way. It's that way if you don't have teeth in your code. It's that way if you don't have people who are, who are catching it. And if we're gonna have people out there catching it, we have to have teeth in our code that they say, okay. Because, because our code does say that it has to be done, I don't know, within 10 days of the disturbance or three days, depending on which, which thing it is. And, but the problem is if they say nah, nah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to it whenever, there, there's nothing we can do.
So we're looking at a multi-pronged approach because it's the, it's the monitoring as well as the teeth on the other side. I'm sorry, I didn't quite see the order here. I've got Mr. Timian and then Mr. Vitas?
Uh, just a question for Mr. Vitas. Doesn't the, um, the, I forget the term, the deposit when these?
Bond?
The, the bond, thank you. Doesn't that kind of, I mean, what I think is gonna happen is people are gonna pay the bond and then never, then we're just gonna be left holding the bag and fixing them ourselves, which might be a natural consequence, but at least we'd be able to knock them out bad. I, I don't really know.
You're taking the words exactly out of my mouth because it's one of the things that,
Hang on.
Michael Schenken and I talked about when we were working on that whole permitting process was coming up with language that would impose a performance bond of, I believe it was $2,500, you know, and it's kinda the penalty. If you don't get the job done, we're keeping the money. We're not returning your bond. In fact, we're not issuing any more building permits to you or any right-of-way permits until you go back and restore. So that was like the first bite. And then, and then having the bond there was kinda the second bite of the apple. And you're right though. I mean, if it gets to the point where they don't care about the money, right? It's a big job, correct? Then they don't get it done. Then we're gonna have to either do it ourselves or pay somebody, contract somebody to come in and restore it. So you're, you're a hundred percent on the market. That's one of the issues.
Mr. Went.
But, but that gets to the exact point is when we're doing this permitting and we're actually gonna now require permits and the, I think the language in the code is that once that project is done, it has to be done with. And the problem has been to, Alderman and Macias is, well, our project was the entire city for the summer and so, you know, it's 10 days after Thanksgiving because that's when we finished it. Oh, and we've got one bond for 2,500 bucks? Eh, take the 2,500 bucks and we won't do anything. That's where want staff to come in and like pull that together and, you know, a project is a block or two blocks or whatever makes sense. And then there's the 2,500 for that permit for that project or performance bond. And then to the next thing, because otherwise you're a hundred percent right. The, the 2,500 bucks for a city-wise project is nothing. But that's where the intent of what I was trying to do is let's come back, let's, let's nip this in the bud before we wind up with what we had last summer where every other block going through the second ward, if, if you were in a wheelchair or you had problems getting around, it was not safe to walk.
Thank you. Anything else in this, uh, wait, do we have to vote on that motion, right? All right, hearing nothing else, roll call please on, uh, having staff come back with some ordinance updates with more teeth or some policy options.
For, for ground and right-of-way.
Right-of-way maintenance, got it.
Alderman, Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
You said nay. Yeah, thank you. Alderman, Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams? Seven ayes, one nay. Okay, anything further?
Yeah, and, and then the third one was I've had dozen, well, numerous people from other communities that worked in other communities that reached out to me over the last month or so. And they had indicated, again, talking about the right-of-way, make sure that you get what, and, and the three things that they talked about was your definition of double poles and what that means and when they gotta be taken down and how long they can be up and how much distance between one pole and another is considered a double pole because you wind up with, where they'll just put a pole in between and be like, it's not a double pole. We just have to put a pole in between two poles. And, and so, um, that, the separation between, uh, lines actually on a pole, they ran into a, a lot of issues where they just overlap and put things stringing and draping through other people's, uh, lines. And then, um, some kind of, uh, uh, teeth for disruption of service because they wound up with a lot of situations where other lines would happen to get clipped and knocked off and people's services to, uh, other things would get, um, removed or accidentally, uh, damaged when, when new things are, are being put through. And so I'd like to move that we direct staff to come back because, yeah, I sent to an email, I don't know, little over a month ago, within a thousand feet of my house, there's four double poles. You know, some have the equipment on it, some have no equipment on it, some are half cut off, some are, you know, and they're still just sitting there. And so we need to have some, something in place where there's a timeframe, explanation of what things are so we, we can, uh, make sure that we have this tightened up. So when we negotiate our contract, we're doing it from a, a place of strength rather than trying to figure it out down the road.
Got that.
So I, I'll, I'll make the motion to direct staff to, uh, come back with, um, cleaning up our definitions of poles and double poles, separation of, uh, between lines and utility service and, uh, and issues pertaining to disruption, that there's penalties when doing aerial installations.
Got it. Is there a second for that motion? Is that a second?
A second, but.
Second by Alderman Moyer?
A clarification.
Yes, Mr. Moyer.
Does that also include like when the second pole will come down if?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, because that's why I had, I had, you know, I know that even in our own ravine, they had two poles for a long time and media comes on one and Mid-American's on the other. And then when they finally got them, after like six years, got the other wires moved, the old poles just got shoved into the ravines. So.
So removal.
You know, yeah, that's exactly what happens to these things. They get, they get up and down the ravines.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Went.
Yeah, a, a hundred percent. I mean, like, but I, I've got one that's cut off about a foot and a half. You know, and the stub is there and it's all janky and I've got another one where they cut it off halfway when they took the Mid-American stuff off, but when AT&T or whatever, that stuff is still there. And so, yes, timeframes, timelines, because it's expensive. Like to put a new pole in and then take the other thing out, it's somewhere between 2,500 and 3,000 bucks. And if they can avoid that, uh, and not have to come back later, it, it saves them a lot of money, but it, it crudges up our, our right-of-way in our neighborhoods too. So just wanna get this cleared up.
Yes, Mr. Macias?
Is that, is that something that CTC, uh, might have some kinda guidance on, you know, cleaning up poles and all that stuff?
It sounds to me, I, I think that they're very focused. They could have it and it would, you're, I, obviously we're wanting it to be relevant to these negotiations, but it's also just straight up ordinance, you know, updates that our legal counsel needs to provide us, so.
So this would be amendments then to Chapter Six definitions as they exist today. So that's what it is.
That's where we're headed. All right, hearing no further discussion, roll call please.
Alderman, Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Went?
Uh, yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer?
Hi, I have one thing. Um, thank you. So speaking of zoning, a few months ago, actually probably last year, we approved a zoning change on 36th Street and Avenue of the Cities. I can't remember how that zoning thing, but we, we joined some lots there. And anyway, Kixxer Coffee's going in there and I was over there talking to them and they told me that they are opening up tomorrow. So if you want a cup of coffee tomorrow, Kixxer at 36th Street and, um, the Avenue of the Cities will be open. And then they mentioned a problem. The turn, if you're heading east on the avenue, there's a small turn lane for 36th Street. You've already got this. Or you.
Driving right past it because I usually go next door.
Well, you'll have a alternative now. So you can get into that turn lane, but there's a short turn signal and it can kinda back up under normal traffic. And they were asking if we would consider changing it to maybe a flashing light or something. But I was gonna ask you specifically, um, we have an Avenue of the Cities traffic study that's this year, right?
Yes.
Are we doing that now and would that be something that would be incorporated in that study?
I think it's underway right now.
And, and they would, is that something that they could consider or should I make a motion to ask that they?
Shoot us an email and we'll.
All right, we'll do.
It's, it's on, uh, okay.
That should be 37th.
Right there by Kixxer and.
Kixxer.
37th.
Yeah.
37th Street. Yeah.
37th.
It's not on my ward, so I've got my job.
37th Avenue, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing other than I've tested positive for COVID and just to warn people, COVID is still around. It's still out there.
Thank you. Well, we hope, we wish you well with recovery.
Thank you.
Mr. Waldron?
I did mine earlier. Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, um, just want to bring to everyone's attention that the library board has been hard at work, really starting to look at what they're gonna do with the outs, outside space that comes with the lot that they had acquired and now has been, uh, the building is torn down and all that step is done. So they are in the study phase. They have kinda their earliest ideas. So they're out looking for someone to help take, um, take their ideas and turn it into RFP language and how that's gonna be. We, uh, can expect to see them coming back to kinda share with us. I kinda had, we had talked about their plans for that. So it's just very exciting. We're gonna see something like, uh, from an outdoor space, looking at how to integrate that so it can serve to, uh, an adult venue type place where you have, uh, something there as well as something you can appeal to family and to kids. So it's just very exciting to watch and something to look forward to. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to, to help or, or connect to anyone who can answer more than I.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a follow-up.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Kudos to Public Works and the street department staff that took that building down, got grass growing already. It looks tremendous. That lot doesn't look like the house even existed there and they, kudos to, uh, Public Works.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Vitas?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Um, just a reminder, Moline 150 is now less than a month away. And staff has been working constantly on this project. And believe me, it, it is a consuming project with a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions and involving pretty much all the departments. So, you know, I think so, first I wanna thank all the staff who are engaged in that because, you know, when we took that on, I mean, it looked like one thing. Now it's, now it's, it's like, it's the elephant and, uh, and they've tamed it. They've done a really great job. Things, you know, there's questions that come up, answers are going out. Merchants are excited at the, uh, at the meeting last Friday with the, uh, the special service area merchants, downtown merchants meeting. Great conversations, great input from everybody. Concerns were expressed. We've addressed those concerns. Uh, people, people get upset. We take care, we calm those waters. But, you know, everybody, everybody's thrilled that it's coming. They're excited about it. You can expect to see a lot of, uh, advertising coming out very, very shortly now with more detail in terms of the events and when they'll be scheduled, which bands play, which days, which times. They're working on, working on all of that. So, and getting all the vendors all set up. So it's a very huge project, but, uh, I think we're looking forward to something that will be quite memorable for, uh, future years when we're done with it. Just a side note, we kicked off our initial discussions with Metronet today. So we had a one-hour meeting just to, to sit down and talk about, uh, talk about the, uh, the poles that, that are still out there that they wanna wrap up. We had that discussion. We had discussions about the past poles. It's a different, different topic for a different discussion with different people. But, you know, they brought it up, so we're having those, we're having dialogue with them. It's been friendly to this point, non-controversial. Um, they're looking for solutions. You know, we started to get into discussions about dark fiber, you know, for the city's use as opposed to commercial use, uh, how that was derived by the consultants, you know, basically what have they installed already in terms of the number of strands per fiber cable. So there's a lot of details that we're trying to flesh out and the engineers need to get engaged in that both from the CTC side as well as from their side. So we're looking at that because those dark fibers and, and hole holes and everything relate to our security cameras, relate to our traffic control signals. So it is a complex project with a lot of engineering behind it. So we at least got the process going and we'll be meeting probably again next week once the meeting gets set up. So it's a challenging project, I can assure you.
Also, next week is when our Assistant City Administrator starts, just a reminder. We can welcome him.
Hopefully they don't get COVID or anything.
Oh, Lord, no. But, yes, Mr. Went.
I, I guess I do have a question. You brought up the negotiations with Metronet and, and those sorts of things. We're probably 27 days out from when we sent our letter of, uh, penalty saying you've got 30 days to, to fix, uh, the thing and our ordinance is pretty clear that you gotta either pull it down or, you know, all, all those sorts of things. I know that the motion we had made was to negotiate with them and consider a, a variance. Are we sitting in a situation where coming this next week, if, because I'm assuming they haven't addressed the, the penalty letter that we sent out?
If we can turn this over to Ms. Casablanca.
Legal counsel would be best to answer that.
So, thank you. I, I would prefer to, uh, finish this discussion tonight in executive session under, uh, possible or probable litigation.
Okay. Your concern will be addressed.
Well, okay.
Anything further from staff? Yes, Ms. Barnes?
As you know, um, departments citywide are working very, very hard to compile all of their budget amendments for '22 as well as the next three years of budgets under potential operating inflationary costs of over 9%. And I wanted to share with you some wonderful news I got today. I haven't even had a chance to tell Bob.
Then I could be surprised too.
We got our actuarial report on our police and fire pension and the funding that we had planned on when they did the actuarial report last year, it's $150,000 less on the operating side than we had anticipated. So although 150 doesn't balance the budget entirely, it is relief and I just wanted to say that we are seeing, we are reaping the benefits of that good decision of issuing the pension obligation bonds. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Anything further from staff? All right, hearing none. We'll finish with miscellaneous business. Is there any public comment out there? No? So, Mr. Williams?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene in executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS 120 slash two.